I'm Stephanie George, President of the Board. We have a full house with us this evening. We have Eric Sisney, Marwan Kamra, Gina Steiner, Eric Fong, and myself all here this evening. So we're glad to welcome, and then we have a couple of guests in the room, which is very exciting. We'll do some more welcomes in a moment. We want to welcome the community who are joining us. We have a wonderful presentation later this evening that we're looking forward to. So we'll get started with the mission statement, inspiring our community to dream more, learn more, do more, and be more. And because Jason is in Chicago, we've asked Shannon to do the hosting responsibilities tonight on behalf of the library director. So Shannon, would you like to do the welcome and introductions?
Absolutely. Hello, everyone. Welcome. We do not have a full house of KRL staff this evening. So Jason is joining us virtually, but to my left I have Tammy Jeffries, Executive Assistant, across Lucretia Robertson, Human Resources and D E I, and Mike Rose, I T and Facilities. Joining us this evening is Teen Services Librarian Glennon Madison from our Port Orchard location, and her wingman, Youth Services Librarian Emin Rogers. Welcome.
Thank you. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda from the board requested? Hearing none. Next is public comment. We don't have any public comments this evening, but it's always welcome, and we're going to be talking about it a little bit later as well. Moving on to the consent agenda. Included in the consent agenda, all matters listed within the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the Board of Trustees with no separate discussion unless separate discussion is desired, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request. Are there any requests from my colleagues on the board to take anything out of the consent agenda? Okay, so included are the routine minutes of the May 23 regular board meeting, minutes of our June 6 study session, payment of May 2023 bills, including payroll and benefits, and blanket voucher bills, and the surplus library materials to be withdrawn from the collection for May, which includes 4,089 items. With that, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I shall move.
Thank you, Eric. Is there a second? Gina, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Great. We're moving, we moved really quickly straight to, straight to Glennon. Shannon, is there a further introduction of what we're about to see this evening?
Yeah, so Glennon will, I'm sure, expound much more eloquently than I in this moment, but I'm really excited for her to share a partnership that, that's okay, a partnership that came to fruition this spring through a local festival called Ways Goose and our local pride organization as well. Glennon was very brave in kind of jumping in and seeing what would happen and inviting teens to come to the table in South Kitsap. And she's here with us tonight to kind of share the results and a beautiful community that she's built.
Hi, everybody. I have the briefest of slideshow because I think pictures tell the story better. Can everybody hear me? And can they hear me on Zoom? Great. Okay, as Shannon said, hi, my name is Glennon Madison. I am the, I've been the Teen Services Librarian at the Port Orchard Branch for the past four years. And this is a program that happened over the course of the last couple of months that I wanted to share about. So let me see if this is advanced word. It is not. There we go. Back in March, Shannon Peterson approached me. She had been in a meeting with members of the Ways Goose Festival and the Kitsap Pride. For those of you who don't know, the Ways Goose Festival is a local Bremerton festival that involves local artists carving large linoleum blocks that are then printed on, at a festival date. The printing process involves inking up these linoleum prints, placing a very large piece of paper over it, and then rolling a steam roller over it, which is very, very cool. The Ways Goose Festival in the last year has transitioned to doing more youth-oriented programming, and they originally approached Kitsap Pride to put together a team of queer youth artists to create one of these carvings. And then Kitsap Pride, through our robust partnership with them, reached out to the library to see if we wanted to kind of coordinate that. And so I was asked to put together a team of queer youth. As many of you probably know, KRL has a robust reputation, particularly the teen librarians, as well as being, as providing a safe space for queer youth. So I think we were uniquely situated to reach out to these youth and provide this. So the team would create a three by three foot linoleum carving. I wish I had it with me. It lived in our office for two months. It was a lot. And then this carving would be printed at the Ways Goose Festival on June 3, and then subsequently displayed at Kitsap Pride, which is still to happen in July 23. The Ways Goose theme for this year, every year they choose a theme that you're meant to create the carvings around, and that theme is gathering, which will become relevant later. So by the nature of kind of the timing of these meetings and the timing and my own personal programming, the entirety of this project took place in May, which is quite a hefty endeavor. We ended up having nine teens who came to the library consistently for four sessions to see the project through start to finish. That project involved conceiving of the illustration, which they actually made, and then transposing it onto the lino block, and then actually carving it. All told, that took about 10 to 12 hours, which is quite a significant time investment. And this is a good time to mention that, number one, I have no experience, I have no artist experience pretty much whatsoever. And many of my teens had various levels of experience, ranging from no experience to some minimal experience. However, luckily, at KRL, we have several people on staff who have been Ways Goose artists in the past. And though, I reached out to them before the program started and asked them to be guest artists who would lead us through that process. So I need to name all of them because they, this project would not happen without them. So our guest artists were Alyssa and Jeannie Allen, Rosie Bromberg from CTS, and Tara Tapia, who was also from Communications. And then I, we also worked with Nick Schluter, who's a community partner at the Bainbridge Island Museum of Arts. So with those four experts, they kind of guided us through the process and taught us different things every session. Tara came in and actually taught us how to carve, and then Rosie kind of guarded, guided the process as we started. Alyssa and Jeannie and Nick all helped us kind of conceive of the project and understand, and they also shared a lot of their tools, as well as advice and resources and such. And we could not have done it without them. The pictures that you see up here are the pictures throughout the process, and as you can see, there's a lot of joy and a lot of collaboration happening. I, I need to mention that most of these teens did not know each other before this started, and by the end, they had become very close friends. It was a real joy to see a lot of laughter and joy. There was a lot of sharing of memes that I did not know anything about. They, besides the project itself, I think a lot of the teens came back to the space because they found many friends and a real shared community and teens, and other teens who, who felt the same way that they did, and they had shared commonalities, which I think was a really incredible side effect of this project. As I said, we finished the lino block at the end. We were all very excited, and it took, I think, all told, about 10 to 12 hours. They put in a lot of work. I was incredibly impressed and proud, and some of them definitely took on some more, some more, took on some extra work in terms of that. And then on June 3 was the actual Ways Goose Festival. So I, seven of the teens managed to make it to the Saturday event, and many of them brought their parents, which was a really fun experience to kind of, for the parents to see not only their teens in this community setting, but also see what they had actually created. One of our teens, who was actually, I would consider her our lead artist, she, her mom shared the story with me that she had been bringing her daughter to the Port Orchard Library for storytime back when her daughter was a little girl. And then, and her daughter was about to graduate high school, so she kind of started her educational career at the library and was finishing it out at the library, which I think is just an incredible kind of full circle experience. Also, all of our guest artists were actually at Ways Goose as well, supporting and encouraging and cheering the team on, which I think was amazing. You can see Nick Schluter up there and Rosie Bromberg, and Jeannie and her daughter Alyssa and Tara were also there as well, kind of supporting this. There was a sense, I think, for these teens of being a part of something larger than just like these sessions at the library, which I think was really incredible. And it was also amazing to see them connect with other local artists and to hear artists praising their work and praising the drawing, the prints that they created, that I think was something really special. And there's also the steam roller up there, which I was not allowed to drive. I also included this slide just to show you from conception to finished product. So on the left up there is the drawing that one of our teens, Odessa, created. On the other side of the print is the actual lino block, which is very difficult to see, but it involves taking very small tools and carving out every bit that you don't want stamped. And then in the middle is the actual stamp. The theme, as I said earlier, was gathering, and the teens themselves focused on the themes of gathering, community, and connection. They really wanted the print to show people who are different, or creatures who are different, being accepted and embraced. They felt like that was the real definition of community. And one of my teens described the print as capturing those fleeting nights with friends where you can truly be yourself. As included in some of the documents that I sent over before this, this print is titled "Under the Rabbit Moon." I think it's rather spectacular for the amount of time we spent on it. Lastly, I just wanted to share a little bit about the outcomes. I realized that one outcome that I didn't put on here, which is really ridiculous, is we have a completed printing. We finished the lino block, we printed it at the Ways Goose. One will be hanging in the Port Orchard Library eventually, and one will also be at the Kitsap Pride Festival, which I think is a really special continuation, just showing these teens that their work belongs in the community. So number one, that was the biggest, one of the biggest outcomes. They also learned new skills. They learned how to stamp carve. They learned how to work on a project and set goals and timelines for themselves. Another outcome was a strong sense of belonging, both at the library, realizing that the library is a place for programs, is a place to meet people, is a place where they belong, and also that belonging within the larger Kitsap community, and that the larger Kitsap artist community. And lastly, I think, kind of leading into that, the best outcome is the strong community connections that were made here with community organizations and artists through the Ways Goose. They know of artists and events in the community that they may not have known about beforehand. Another outcome that I'm really proud of is they have a stronger connection to the library, not only to the Port Orchard Branch where this program took place, but in connecting them to Jeannie and Tara and Rosie, they have a stronger sense of who does the work at the library, and a strong sense of the library employees who wish to support them and make the library a space. They now know who makes the graphics that they see out in the community. They know who buys their books that go on their shelves. Not just me, or they see me and Emin, they know the work that we do, but now they see other people who work at the library, and they know that those people are artists, have careers besides their art, in addition to their artists, artistic talents, and that they know those people are supporting them behind the scenes and making the library that belongs to them. And lastly, they formed a community themselves, which is always our goal with teen programming, is to connect teens to each other and allow them to see that they're not alone, that there are other teens and friends that they can know and meet. And one of my teens said it perfectly in that we, they said, "We came together because we were interested in the project, and we formed a little community out of it," which I think really beautifully captures it. And then I included just a little bit at the end of why I feel this matters, which is the library is uniquely situated as a place in the community and as employees of the library to support youth and to give them the space, tools, and support to create something tangible and meaningful. And I think that impact is going to last far beyond this program. My teens have a group chat going. They're coming into the library to say hi. They're coming into the library to connect to each other, and I'm really excited to see how those, how those connections develop in the future. Thank you. I can answer any additional questions if you have any, but I know I went a little bit long with that.
You went just fine. It was perfect. Glennon, how did you, these teens volunteered, but how do you go about making any of your programs kind of known? And were they predominantly from South Kitsap, or did they come from across the library because they were interested in this project?
That's a great question. I believe they were primarily from South Kitsap, and I think this is, in a, in a kind of 2023 post-pandemic atmosphere, we spent a lot of time figuring out how to rework our promotion to get to people. I'm really lucky that I was able to connect with my teachers. I promote quite robustly with my schools. I typically put up really big displays in the library. I've found that that is one of the biggest drivers of attendance. If I have a big flashy display out front, if any of you come into the Port Orchard Library, you'll probably see one. But I know several of my teens came to me through teachers. My, I send it out to all of my librarians, my school librarians, and they shared it out to their teachers. I also shared it with my fellow teen librarians, and they shared it out, but obviously with teens, transportation is an issue. But I do think one of the incredible outcomes is now these, some of, a lot of them were new to me teens, and I do hope to see them more now that they know of the library as a place.
Thank you. Other questions for Glennon?
You know, as someone who didn't really engage in libraries growing up, I'm just always surprised, you know, as much as the library engages with the community and is so authentic, right? And then when folks come in and report, this is what we did in the community, I mean, you can see, you know, your joy in reporting it out, it just, it just feels good. It's a really good feeling. But I also wanted to ask, what is the Ways Goose Festival? I never heard of it before.
So I believe that Ways Goose is an overarching term, and it's the Ways Goose Kitsap Festival, which I believe I should have said. And so it's all based on this idea of stamp carving, and I believe it's large carving. So it took place this year here in down, it typically takes place in downtown Bremerton, and years past, they've blocked off a downtown street. But this year, it was at the Marvin Williams Center. It was in the parking lot. And so different artists sign up, and then the Ways Goose Festival provides them with the lino block, which is really big. This year, it was three by three foot, but in years past, it's been four by four foot. And then they use very special and very sharp tools to carve a design that then is essentially turned into a giant stamp. And so then a piece of paper, you ink it up, and then a piece of paper is put over it, and then they roll the steam roller over it, which provides the pressure to create that print. And then as artists, we were, we will be given three of the prints, and then the rest of them will be auctioned off in the community to support the Ways Goose Festival. Hopefully, one of the final prints will live at the Port Orchard Library. We believe that that's going to happen. And then one is also going to be on display at the Kitsap Pride Festival, probably in the teen area, which is another partner. As I mentioned, KRL has a really robust partnership with Kitsap Pride, in large part through the, the work of Jeannie Allen. And last year, the teen librarians helped facilitate a teen space there, and this year we're expanding that. So we're excited that this will be an element of that space.
Yeah, I just wanted to offer you praise. Not only was it wonderful art, but you saw a lot of smiles, which you can tell that they felt safe, they felt appreciated, and very proud that we could be any part of a conduit in creating a safe space. Is there anything more that KRL or the board can do to continue, whether it's these types of programs, or any, do you need more resources? What do you need to be able to continue doing things like this?
What a great question. I should have come prepared for that, but the first thing that's, that comes to my mind is, and I've mentioned this to Jason recently, but I genuinely loved working with my colleagues who are not front-facing. I think not only was it a great opportunity for us to work together, but as I say, I think it was really valuable in giving the teens perspective of potential jobs down the line, but also knowing people in their community who they may not see every day. And so if any of you have any special skills you wish to share with the teens, please email us, and we will find a program to fit you in, because I think that would be really valuable and important, and yeah, just fun for all of us.
That sounds great. I will, I, I throw my name into the hat.
Excellent. I will call on all of you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All have a great night.
Thank you. I'm always just so impressed when we see, well, first of all, Port Orchard's very busy. I know everybody's very busy, but the, but the programming that definitely, that we've seen come out of that branch for youth particularly is always really inspiring. So thank you. And thanks for taking the time to come here this evening and share that with us. Moving on, we'll go to board member reports. Should we start with, well, Eric, you had a big event. Do you want to start with your, your involvement?
Yeah. First of all, let's see, June 6, I attended the Intellectual Freedom Workshop, and that was really rewarding and valuable. But then on Father's Day, we had the Manchester Salmon Bake. I volunteered for that, as did Eric and Jason and Shannon, and Dan Bear showed up and had a great time. It was profitable for the Friends of Manchester Library, but more importantly, I think it's a really important social event in the Manchester area. And we get people there that don't, probably wouldn't come to the library, so it's a matter of, we have outreach to the library. And a lot of people toured the new addition to the library and were impressed, I heard. So anyway, it was, it poured down rain. I guess Shannon got it right at the end, and it was hailing and everything, but we made a profit. I think we served over 800 meals. And anyway, it's a big deal. So thank you, all of you that participated and volunteered and so on.
Great. Thank you. Eight hundred is that an increase over past years?
I think we had that many last year, too. It's gotten a little bigger every year, but that, I think it's, that's about what we did last year. Yeah, it's a lot of work. I think I spent most of that week, Monday, I think, my daughter and grandkids and I spent most of the day trying to dry out the canopies. I mean, what do you do? You've got all these wet canopies, you can't bundle them up because they mold. So anyway, it's a lot of work before and after, and during.
And after. Wonderful world of special events. Marwan, how about you?
Well, it sounds like the salmon bake got the Juneteenth rain, so we thought it was going to rain and it held off. You know, one thing that was just really exciting to see was the library's presence there again, and as the presentation was just shared with us, the authenticity and the excitement in sharing what the library does just really comes through. I met some new staff that wasn't, that I hadn't met previously there before. I may have lost my library card and got a Juneteenth library card, so, which is really exciting. So I love all the little details that the library pays attention to, to really engage in the community that they're serving. So I really appreciate that. Also, I shared with about three folks about printing at the library, and folks are still surprised that that is an option. Two have taken advantage of that, and they've used it more than once. So that's really awesome. And so it's just really important to continue to share out all the different things that the library does, which is so far beyond just being in a library and books. The summer reading program, of course, has kicked off, and I will be earning my minutes, you know, this year. So even though I have the t-shirt, I'm going to work diligently to do that. Just as an off note, one of the prizes was a little garden in the window last year. And so I wanted to garden because that was, that encouraged me to do it. So this year, I'm actually going to do some kale and potatoes. So I got the soil today, right before the meeting. I've got my kale, so we're going to grow this summer. So, and that came because of the library. So just another touch point on how the library, you know, impacts folks in the community and me myself. So I wanted to share that out. And just, you know, kind of remind everyone about all the different things, like the telescopes and the stem packets that we were talking about, the discovery passes, so many different things that the library has to offer. If you're looking for something to do in the summer, and you're like, I just don't know, there's something for everyone at the library. So I just wanted to remind people of that.
Thanks. Since I missed the May meeting, I didn't get to give a report, but I participated with Leann, the branch manager for Little Boston-Kingston, at the Strong Family Fair at Little Boston, and helped her sign people up for library cards and hand out free materials and little activity kits. And we had quite a few people come and visit the tables, so that was really fun, just to hang out and interact with the community. I'm happy to report that I brought my daughter and my four-year-old granddaughter over. My four-year-old granddaughter got her first library card, and we worked with the staff at the Little Boston Branch to see what the latest and greatest books were and learned about this read-along series that they have, where the books actually read to the kids, and they have a little sound effect to prompt the kids to turn the page. And so my granddaughter loved that and checked some out. And then I signed up for the Summer Reading Challenge, although I admit I'm terrible at tracking, so we'll see if I'm improved at reporting back. And then I recently learned about, from my daughter, the Libby app and the ability to, she's the one who was telling me about it, I should know this stuff more, but to download books on your, and audible ones, as you and I were talking about, Stephanie. So anyway, yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
So I volunteered, as Eric mentioned, I volunteered at the salmon bake with, with Jason, and this is my second year volunteering, I made the joke that I was demoted from coleslaw to bread. But what I found actually was that the younger folks were not interested in coleslaw last year, but this year, like having a four-year-old son myself, who basically survives on bread and ketchup and raw carrots, I found that like I was everybody's best friend with garlic bread. So it was great. Eric, thank you for letting me be a part of it. It's always just a nice way to spend Father's Day, is to be able to volunteer and give back and feed a whole lot of people. So thank you for letting me be a part of that. The other thing that I did was, there was a BPL Board Meeting, Bainbridge Public Library, and the Bainbridge Branch was closed for a couple of weeks for elevator fixes and fixing up the parking lot as well. And during our last BPL Board Meeting, Kathy, the president, stopped to sing praises to Mr. Mike Rose, who was very helpful in not only audio and video here, but just making sure that Bainbridge had everything they needed. They knew that it was not a great time to close, but it needed to happen. It's not great, great timing to close a library around finals time. But Mike and the staff were very accommodating, very collaborative, and they really appreciated Mike's work. So thank you, Mike.
Thank you. I too, we, we were at the Intellectual Freedom Session. I was smiling at Gina because we had been talking the prior month about not always using the resources of the library and, and using stuff that sometimes you can get a little faster. So I actually, after Gina derided me, gave me a little incentive to, you know, think about maybe we should borrow more. about maybe we should borrow more than, than in the past. I actually registered, I re-registered on the library site, and I had to call the staff because it had been a while and didn't, I didn't remember my code. And as always, Shannon, the team's fantastic, and they just walked me right through the ability to get re-registered on the new platform, which is amazing. So that was fun. Thank you. Moving on to the Strategic and Long Range Planning Committee Report. Gina or Marwan, is somebody going to report?
Well, I took notes, so I'll go ahead and share, and then you can fill in, Marwan, if I miss anything? Okay. So I'm going to summarize this pretty quickly, but we actually had quite a long meeting, so. But the, the operations, we're continuing to support staff to acclimate to the website. That's an ongoing adjustment for staff. And the library's in the process. We have a contract to upgrade internal printing in branches, and that'll take effect this fall and includes wireless printing. And we, as we just talked about, we've launched the summer programs for the 100-hour reading challenge. And for the Port Orchard facility, we're wrapping up the feasibility study that is going well, and we're receiving good feedback, so we can expect to hear more about that soon. The library is overhauling its payroll procedures, so currently staff are paid two times per month, but we're moving into bi-weekly every other Friday, starting in October. We're in the process of signing an agreement with the South Kitsap School District, so students can access library materials with their student ID. So this will be the third school district that we will add in addition to the Bormenton and North Kitsap ones. And we recently received a Washington State Humanities Grant for primetime reading to help remove reading barriers with elementary-age children in partnership with three schools. And we will share meals, and we're working out like where this will happen and everything, but that sounds like a really exciting program. And then we're reimagining or imagining again, returning to pre-pandemic hours for operations in several of the branches. And we're still considering adding more bookwalkers. And we can expect to see some more strategic planning materials in, with a new mission, vision, and other areas of alignment. And I think that's about all. I'm not sure if I missed anything. Jason, did I miss anything? Nod your head.
You're fine. That was great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That was, that was a robust conversation you, you all had. The next report is a financial report. We didn't have a meeting this month. I did review the financials. We don't have Dan Bear with us this time. Financials are, continue to truck right along on par, as they should be, in a pro-rata basis for where we are in the fiscal year. We are seeing that some of the tax revenue is tracking ahead, but that all works itself out in the end. It's all more of a timing issue over time. I did note, we continue to have, you know, just high security costs, really focused at three of the branches. It would actually be interesting, probably sometime, Jason, in the future, to really probably learn just a little bit more about all the things that some of the branches are dealing with. Because I also noticed in your report that there'd been training in, in multiple locations around the use of Narcon. So I just think, understanding, we see all these amazing things that we do programming, but we're really, in so many ways, on the front line of the community, and just really kind of having a better understanding of that would be good, I think, at some point in the future. Any other questions about, we'll swing them to Jason if you've got them. Any questions about the financials? Okay, thank you. Jason, up to you, in Chicago.
Good evening, board and leadership and community. And yes, I bring you greetings from hazy Chicago. There's a persistent layer of haze because of wildfires. It's an environmental alert here, so it's pretty surreal right now. But yeah, I just wanted to start out by thanking the trustees, just listening to your reports for your investment in a library beyond just attending this meeting every month. I'm really impressed at the, your investment in both attending programs and promoting library programs and resources to the community, and beyond just showing up for Board Day. So it's really impressive, and I'm happy that we have such an engaged Board of Trustees. So thank you for all you do. And as we talked about in our Strategic and Long Range Planning Meeting, we're really just, you know, focusing on, you know, our service and, and our operations right now, but also we're really focused on getting our managers, supervisors and leadership continually trained to lead the organization. You know, we want all of our leaders to continue to develop themselves, to have tools to be able to lead the organization through changes, challenges and opportunities. And, you know, we believe in developing empathic leaders who can communicate and have the capacity for empathy. So that's really a lot of what our focus has been on. We've retooled our leadership meetings, which occur every Wednesday from 9:30 to 12, to include some segment of training around leadership. And although we've done that in the past, and we do have fantastic directors who are empathic, in my listening tours around our library, it was important for us to really focus on, you know, sort of adding to the skillsets that these dynamic leaders that you have sitting with you and some that are out of the room that they already have. And so I don't believe in resting on our laurels as leaders, so we really, will continue to pour resources into training our, both our top-level leaders and our middle-level leaders, and quite frankly, all staff. But in terms of leading the organization, we really need to provide some investment to do that. And so it all starts at the top. We completed in May, I talked about a little bit of this last month, a 12-week course around perceptual intelligence, where, and we're currently in a masterclass right now with our managers and supervisors and leadership on radical candor, tackling hard conversations. And we've completed an extensive assessment of the human resources function with a consultant and with our dynamic HR team, because HR is really essential to everything we do in a library. And so given that, the very talented Lucretia Robertson has assumed the role as HR Director as well as the DEI Director, you know, I want to commend upon me as a Director to give her all the resources and tools that she needs to be able to manage human resources. And so we're really looking at a strategic HR department within our organization, because HR is our go-to for developing our human capital. And so next month, we'll have our consultant, who really worked with the HR team, will present his methodology results and the implications of that assessment to the trustees with Lucretia. And that will happen next month. Last month, too, I attended a fundraiser with, one of the community highlights was I attended a fundraiser at the Lisa Stewart Creative Warrior Studio to bring awareness, and really it was to create some philanthropic engagement around the soon-to-be-open Coffee Oasis, which will be housed in the Silverdale Library. This Coffee Oasis has long been in the works for the new library, and finally, it will come to fruition later this summer. And so it's nice to, to go to that event and to talk to the folks at Coffee Oasis and to really support them in this mission. In May, we also launched our long-awaited website. As you know, May 3rd, big shout to our comms team and all of our internal partners who planned, designed and executed the launch of our website. As we stated in the Strategic and Long Range Planning Report, we're really focusing on making sure that staff and patrons get acclimated with any new investment, like especially with technology, it's all about managing the bugs, making sure we're, you know, you know, appropriately supporting people to manage this change. And, you know, it's a new asset, and we'll be launching a mobile app soon to the public, and so that'll be an added benefit for patrons who are used to having a library on the go. We have a significant number of patrons who use our digital resources, and so that'll be an added benefit to them. In May, we also celebrated our Friends of Libraries with our return of our annual Friends of the Library Appreciation Lunches, which was hosted by the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation. And it was highlighted by a fascinating presentation, I think many of you were there, by author Si Montgomery and illustrator Matt Patterson. He talked about their book, A Book of Turtles, and it was hosted at Silverdale Library, and it's just a fascinating, fascinating program. That was capped by a great public program that happened at the Silverdale Library with Matt Patterson and Si Montgomery replicating that presentation for families. And it was a treasure to see, thanks to the foundation team and, and our philanthropic partners and the community who supported that event. And last but not least, I want to offer a big shout-out to Maria Lilo, who is the library assistant at Paul's Bowl. She was our May Star of the Month, and thanks for all you do, Maria. And, and I guess I should have said penultimate, because I really wanted to thank, I wish that we had Emmen and Glenna stay. I really wanted to thank them for their presentation. It's really heartwarming to see the work that goes into youth programming at Port Orchard, and I know all of our youth and teen librarians do exceptional programming, but I really want to highlight the work Glenna is doing particularly. She's really passionate about her work, and she's passionate about her community, and that's what a library is about. It's about welcoming everybody and making sure that we have safe spaces and we have spaces that feel welcome. You know, here at the American Library Association, you know, we've heard all sorts of presentations from authors and illustrators over the last few days, and one of the commonalities in all of them is that they all fondly remember their libraries, they all fondly remember their librarians, and they remember that those were spaces where they got support and spaces where they were able to feel creative and they felt safe and helped really hone their skillsets. And they all credit it libraries with really being, you know, sort of the cornerstone for how they developed and how their careers were able to launch from having a really supportive adult person in their lives. So, you know, it's really evident to me that we're continuing in that tradition here in Kitsap. I'm really proud of all of our librarians, but particularly proud of the work that Glenna has done around Waze Goose and everything else she does. She's a very passionate librarian and really cares about her community. That is my report. Any questions?
Any questions for Jason? Thank you, Jason. That was a, that was a great report. We forget sometimes, I think, we talk about, I mean, we see the programming and we talk about the programming, but your comment in particular, and we talk about belonging, and we talk about the library as a big entity, but your comment, notwithstanding that in, in all of those programs are human beings who are literally forming those connections one-to-one in the community. And I think sometimes even I lose sight of that in terms of what it means to people to have other adults in their lives to mentor and support. And you, you know, we, we almost take it, sadly, almost take it for granted, because the team, without exception, is so passionate and so positive, and we, we see it all the time. And yet we can't forget, we really can't forget it. So appreciate that very much. The next, there is no correspondence, so the next item on our agenda is a piece of old business. I think this is the now third and, and I think final time that this particular piece is coming through. So we've been working as a board over the past couple of months to, one, it did start out with upgrading the guidelines for public comment, and it's, it is going to be done in the context of a larger policy that provides context and guidance for that, for public engagement. Tonight, however, so those two pieces got separated for the sake of what we're seeing tonight, so we're only actually at the moment looking very specifically at what is a final draft for the very specific guidelines for public comment. And we've offered along, A, along these, these multiple meetings, in addition to the conversations that we've all had together about what we hope for in, in, you know, upgraded public comments, but also what we'd like to see materialize in a broader policy about the Board of Trustees' public engagement, specifically in the community. The things that have specifically been included that we need to account for in the guidelines are certainly the fact that our old public comment guidelines were, were pre-COVID, were pre-pandemic, which meant we only took public comment if people actually showed up in a meeting. Those meetings also rotated around library branches in the county, which one could say that could make it difficult, depending on what our agenda was and how well that lined up to the geography of where you particularly lived. So the, the public comment now addresses the fact that we've made changes, important changes, good changes, to account for the fact that we're going to stay in a hybrid model, that we can now accommodate both in-person but also virtual attendance. It also, and, and that is a real testament, we see that line item in the budget, right, that it's increased? Well, it's increased because the library has invested in the fact that we're here at this facility so that we can have access to the technology that makes it possible to actually be in a hybrid model 100% of the time, but also then to record these meetings. That was other feedback we received from the public, the, the desire that we are able to record these meetings and that they could be played back at people's convenience. So these address both of that. And they do also clarify, because we didn't take written comment before, you either came to a meeting and spoke into the meeting as public comment, or you generated correspondence for the board. That became particularly challenging when we were in an all-virtual format, because it became a little bit confusing about what was correspondence and when was it public comment, and did we read it into the minutes and how did we handle that? So part of what's been included in this upgrade is, is greater transparency, greater clarity about particularly these elements that have evolved, and I think are improvements to our access, which is the, which is our intent. And, you know, courtesy of COVID, COVID, something, something good that came out of COVID. So with that, I will take any, and I should note, we have invited the public to provide further commentary and further input to these, as well as the staff. We haven't, we've gotten some good feedback from the staff, which we've incorporated. We have not gotten further specific feedback from the public, other than that which we received prior. So at this point, this is a final draft, and I will open it up to my colleagues for their comment or questions, or just where you all feel like we are at the present moment with this particular piece of the procedural aspect of our soon-to-be policy, but this is just dealing with the procedures related to public comment. So with that, I'll open it up to one of you.
I would just say that I feel good with what we've produced here, and I also appreciate the fact that time was taken and a wide net was cast for input to make sure that it was inclusive and everyone had an opportunity to weigh in if they want to make public comment. And so I see a lot of different ways in here. And I understand this is before my time of moving around. I guess when I first came in, one of our board meetings was at Sylvan, but I could see how hard that would be, trying to pin down where that next meeting is. So, oh, it's Bainbridge this month, oh, it's over here at Port Orchard. So that would be very difficult. So being in a central location, if I want to make public comment in person, then I can, you know, make that adjustment for that month, but I still have some other options to do so, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I think that it's, it's really well done. It's nice to see how things have evolved, and we've had discussions about everything. And I think at the core of the guidelines, we are opening things up to meet people where they are, leveraging the modern technology and methods that have been used during COVID. But ultimately, we have something that's also flexible and can evolve as the world evolves and as the community's needs evolve. So I think it's a really good framework and very easy to adjust and grow as our, as our community evolves and as our world evolves. So I'm, I'm also happy with it. So I'm, I'm also happy with it.
Well, I think Stephanie knows I looked at this extensively and made several, proposed several edits, which were mostly just like leaning towards being more concise and precise. I just, I think it's pretty good. I'm, maybe I'm a little oversensitive. There's just, I'm wondering, on this first sentence under Community Rules of Engagement, the second paragraph, if we need to say that we do not engage in discussion, I get that it's a time to take in comments and we can take things into consideration and whatnot. But I feel like it's really repetitive and it, I don't know if I'm being, again, hypersensitive, but I just don't like this appearance that, you know, we're not open to things. So the BOT will listen to public comments and take any suggestions or concerns under advisement. We're stating we're not expected to act upon a request at the meeting. So I don't know why, but the BOT does not engage in discussion, that particular, just little set of words I'm sensitive to. And so I'm wondering if it's necessary to include it. And that was the only other substantive thing that I could see in here that I wanted to talk about, I guess. I don't know if anybody else had any thoughts on that.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be open to adjusting the language. I do think it's important to include because, you know, we need to stick to the agenda and we also, there also may be things brought to light that we're not, just not prepared to discuss and we need to be able to do our research. So I, I am open to changing the language, but I, I do think that something like that needs to be included. So we set the expectation that, you know, in public comment, we're not going to be able to answer everybody's question. We could certainly make something an agenda item in the future so that we can do the research and, and have an educated answer.
Thank you. I get that too, yeah. I mean, I mean, it's not, it's not critical.
How about Marwan or Eric? Do you have any, Gina and Eric have put on the table?
I think it's pretty well done. Gina's, maybe we could make slight adjustments to satisfy you, but I think otherwise it's, it's well done and it brings us into the modern technology and so on. So is this the time to move to prove it or should we make slight adjustments?
Well, so I want to go back to Gina, just in part, do you see, so, so it's, so I can see what you're saying too, Gina, because it's, it might even be in the order of the sentence, right? Sometimes it's just a strong sentence that's coming up at the top of the paragraph. That might be part of it for sure. It could also be, because I go back and forth, I mean, I think it's, it's, it's meant to be expectation setting, right? That to let people know that they're not going to be able to necessarily come and engage us in a discussion. We certainly don't want to be in a debate with that. So it's meant to be expectation setting. I can definitely see that it might be off-putting and is it necessary? So I'm wondering, I mean, we could, we could make a change.
I think your idea of just restructuring it might even be. And I guess I'm, again, I'm really sensitive to this issue just because of what's been happening at the school district a lot.
Oh, sorry. I, I, I'll repeat that. I, I think your idea of maybe even just reorganizing a bit and acknowledging that I'm sensitive to this issue because of, you know, how things have been going at local school district and boards and people being cut off or feeling like they're not heard and people, you know, school board members threatening to call the police on public members giving comment if they exceeded the three minutes. And I just, so that's not our issue, but I'm very sensitive to it as just a local community member. And so I don't think we're that way. I just, it makes me cautious seeing how other boards are reacting and wanting to make sure we set a good tone, that's all. So I think even restructuring it would help and I like that suggestion, Stephanie. And, and I completely get the balance of being prepared, taking it, doing an analysis, doing our own due diligence, you know, those kind of things. But just having the right words to facilitate our openness to hearing from the public. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's a good point. I think, you know, procedurally, these things are done because of the board's scope of governance in that boards typically, and this library board specifically, is to govern the library director, its policies, its overall operating budget. And so I think, you know, maybe structuring the sentence to be that the board might not be prepared to engage in discourse because of its limited scope of governance around all library matters or something to that effect. While we'd love to listen to your comments, we may not be prepared at that time to respond due to those reasons. And so I think just welcoming that public comments are in fact welcome in this space. However, the board is inherently not positioned to respond on matters so that it has no governance over, and we can wordsmith it later, but, but I get it, Gina. I, I, we are in a very polarizing time at this moment. And so the board's policies, procedures should reflect the library and what the library is, which is a welcoming place. But I think we're on the right path and, and I appreciate all the work that's been done to get to this point.
If I could, I just wanted to add, you know, what, what Jason is saying is very true. You know, it is a very polarizing time and I've participated in numerous board meetings, whether city council, school board meetings, college board meetings. And there are times when the board will interact with the public either for something that's positive or something that's not positive. I think the expectation needs to be set that, that that's not going to happen here. We're going to take the feedback in and then go back and think about it and make a thoughtful response and, and just not something off the cuff. I think that mitigates a lot of potential damage that, that can be done in folks coming and making public comment, especially for folks that may, they're, they're not listening to this particular board meeting here. Maybe they come in four months from now and they've never seen this. And so the expectations are there and they're set. I think that's important.
Yeah, I think we can do a little framing. I'm thinking about other places in the guidelines specifically where, I mean, so it's about being welcoming, it's about the fact that we expect that we're also going to hear, hopefully, we're going to hear, if we're doing our jobs right, right? We're going to hear a variety of perspectives, some, you know, and differing perspectives. That's the point of a community library. So I think maybe even just framing that a little bit to poise it that public comment is about being in a listening mode. And so we can reframe that. And I think given maybe, given that we don't have both pieces of this here tonight anyway, maybe because this is a little bit tricky and we want to do it justice, that we just take this, and this is a question, you know, do we take it off the table tonight for a vote and just bring it back next month when the policy is also accompanying it? And then vote on both together? How do you feel about that?
You're not here next month, right?
I'm not here in August.
It's August, okay.
So July, so we can do July. Because I think otherwise we can't, I mean, if we go to take a vote and this is a piece that's not been wordsmithed, unless we're going to take the time to wordsmith it here, you know, we're not really in a position to approve it as our guidelines per se. I'm looking at you, Jason, also in terms of, you know, I just think we really need it to say what it's going to say before we ask people to take a vote on it.
I agree. And in light of us presenting this tonight, you know, I want to also give a little bit time for our community who might have some suggestions after watching it, that we can incorporate those suggestions as well as those that were given tonight to just get the language right and bring it back in July, both with the actual policy and approve both at the same time.
Okay. Sounds good. That's feedback. I mean, that's important feedback. I also want to thank, I think an important part of this exercise just in general, because I know, I mean, I, it's part of our own intent, right? It's our, our own purposeful intent to be thoughtful about how we're bringing things forward and not to rush things through necessarily, to allow for discussion and dissent because I think that's an, that's an important part of the culture, that's an important part of the modeling of how we work together as a board. So I, that takes trust, right? And I appreciate, thank you, Gina, for being willing to call that out even at this point in time if it's something that is still, just doesn't sit well. I appreciate the thoughtful commentary and the willingness of the group to kind of just keep working it through. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Well, thanks. And I also appreciate the interaction with the board and the healthy discussion. Thanks. Okay. So we will bring that, those guidelines back with an edit change made in that particular piece and hopefully with the final draft for discussion of the, the public engagement policy as a part of that because public comment is just a small piece of that as well. So we'll do that. With that, we have made it through our agenda with the exception, there is no new business and under housekeeping is a notification of our future, our next regular board meeting date on July 25th preceded by a finance committee meeting. We've made it all the way through. Jason, I don't know, what time is it in Chicago? Are you two hours ahead or three?
Yeah, it's 8:30.
Yeah, good.
Boy, it's too bad that weather there is not so good. You better hurry home, huh?
I'm ready to come back home after, I got to get through my family reunion and I'll see you all then. So let me know if you want me to bring you anything back, souvenirs, frozen pizza.
Won't be frozen by the time you get here. Well, thank you, Jason. Have a good rest of the conference and your family as well. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.